A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Hopefully they have a chance to do the minutes. They're good. They're good. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Okay. Moving along, we're going to have a resolution setting a standard workday for elected and appointed officials to do their state retirement. I move it. First and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor? I oppose. Next up, I have a resolution opposing the New York State Senate Bill 2857 and Assembly Bill 2750 that has to do with a farm being unionized and all the labor rates should go up and about put everybody else out of business. I move it. Second. Anybody else have any discussion?
I just think this is a good stance for our legislature as a whole, but agriculture being like the backbone of our county here, still is, especially a lot of the high intensity labor, vegetable production and apple production that we have. And we definitely need to be giving everybody in agriculture all the help that we can these days. This bill would just, it's been up before. I think it's kind of fast-tracked the past this year unfortunately, but I think we, it's more of us putting our two cents in and taking a stance to join with our agricultural community.
Yeah, I guess to follow up on Terry, I mean, the farm you're, obviously, it's done a lot of work with statistically analyzing this bill and the fact that we have, and it would basically put a nail in the coffin for our dairy farmers. That would be, you know, and then as Terry said, if you haven't taken time to look at the statistics involved, it's really eye-opening, so it's definitely.
Yeah, I mean, any of our crop farmers, it's the same thing, you know, I mean, if you're people going straight for a couple of weeks, you're thinking crops should be lost, wouldn't be in in time, or you think they're all done.
Well, look at the year we've had here, if you have one day off a week and it rains every day, except for that one, I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense.
It's definitely a perfect example where downstate is, just doesn't understand the realities of upstate processes, especially in our culture.
For sure. Must be laid out heat like we do or something like that.
Well, and I would like, and for the record, I know that one of our counties legislators, Soprano, you can ask him too, a lot of these immigrant workers that come over here and help with the process that we have, they live a much better life than some of us even. I mean, there's a lot of standards that are set, it's not like we're talking about slave labor here or anything, we're talking, you know, we need these individuals to help with the production in order for, you know, us to eat. So they're an integral part of that whole agricultural operation that we have.
Richard?
Yeah, and I just want to follow up in case, and I know everybody's busy, I get that, but yesterday's Post Standard, the front page, there was an article on agriculture, it dealt with the wages, which is Morse Soprano did a very professional, non-abasive to anybody discussion about what we're facing, what farmers are facing. If we see Morse, if you see him, just thank him for it, because he did a great job, he did a great job. Great article, if you haven't had an opportunity, pull it up on poststandard.com and read it, but it's, it was really well done. And it drove, like you said, it drove the point home of what's going to happen if we do what they want to, I say "they" because "they" is a vocal mother, downstate.
So we beat that one.
I could go on.
Do we have a first and a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Next up, we have a review of the county flag policy.
Yeah, your agenda didn't match your, what was in the packet.
Oh, so your agenda didn't match policy first?
Yeah.
This is a new policy, some counties have a policy just to set down what, the proper way to display the American flag at their government facilities, we have never had one. Thought perhaps it'd be a good idea to do that, and seeing as how you'll meet the day before Flag Day, it'd be the appropriate day to do it. This basically just summarizes current U.S. Code on the proper display of the American flag and other flags in relation to it, and how they're displayed. It also provides for a means for disposal of flags in the proper way, through watch fire events, boy scouts, girl scouts do it. And we already have a flag disposal receptacle downstairs in this building. What this proposes is that we would acquire a few more and have them available transfer stations to, for the public to properly dispose of flags. I've talked to Mark Powell, he doesn't see a problem with that. So once we have all those receptacles in place, we'll go and use for these smart people that can, they can dispose of the flag properly at those locations for no reason.
I'll make a motion for a discussion.
Second.
Phil, now when you talk about a receptacle, you're not just putting trash can out there, right? You're going to make something similar.
No, like the one makeup provider.
They just didn't want us to be.
Right.
They just throw a trash can over there. Okay, so, no, I think it's a great policy, and actually, my flag pulled one up this weekend, and I got my flag up and everything, and I followed all this, so. You ready for flag last night? Put the lights on.
So are we voting on this, or is it just so far?
You can vote on it in Senate Tribunal of Legislature. This is a, normally this committee would vote on a policy, but if you would like the full legislature to vote on, you can, I think you can adapt yourself.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. Okay, so we're moving along to.
We need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote. We need a first.
Get it, actually.
I thought we were voting, that's how I meant it.
Did you have a coffee yet? No. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? I oppose. Okay. Now we're onto the golf course.
All right, well, I don't, there's a memo in here to Chairman Wetherup regarding Senate and Assembly Bill that are proposing to impose property tax levies on golf courses, not based on what their current use is, like every other property or in the state, but what is their highest and best use. And this, this letter came from the golf clubs and courses from around Swigill County opposing this, setting, you know, fearing that they may be able, it imposes a unfair tax on them, since no one else is based on, taxed on highest and best use. Who determines highest and best use? And why is it singling out golf courses rather than variety of properties? So the chairman wanted this memo shared with the committee to discuss whether to go on the record about these bills.
Betsy? And did you give some kind of direction, morbidity, or anything at all on this?
We have not.
It has to have, so. It's just something that's up, right?
Just my opinion, it makes no sense, it'd be like saying farmland should be assessed as condos, and it's just, it makes no sense.
Well, they couldn't do that, too, you know? You might think like you moved them, all the farmland, milking lands, and then all your assessments skyrocket, it'd be another thing to just put people out of business, basically.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we have two gentlemen that signed on this letter, I don't know if they, if you're okay with it, I know it's up to the chairman's prerogative, but audience speaking on this, but I don't know if either one would like to add into this with your permission. We have Will Wymer and Matt Bacon.
Yeah, it just seems very arbitrary to single out one particular business, and to the committee's point, who sets the standard? So if they say that these should be condominiums on our property and assessed, you know, 10, 15 times, is there going to be any discussion on, is there a market for that? Is there, you know, a developer who's willing to invest in the area? And just, I think it seems very premature just to single out golf courses at this point in time.
You have anything to add, Richard?
Well, in agreement with Mr. Bacon, I know that from the central New York PGA's position, I served on the board of directors with 178 fellow pros, we have fought this battle in some other states, too, and it did not get passed, but narrowly, so it was close, in Connecticut and Maryland. So we gathered some of the information that you read in that letter from some of the associations that have been fighting this in other states as well. And I personally spoke to everybody on that list, and they're very adamant about at least just being on record, if possible, that they're in dissonance with this legislation. As a golf course owner who bought a newer, or a place that needed rehabilitation, who now has 21 employees in our county, and has taken a revenue stream that had fallen next to nothing, and in three years moved it to four or five times where it was, it'd be a shame, I'd go back to teaching golf, and I wouldn't own a golf course if it was to pass.
Well, and, you know, we'll just sit out hard here, they definitely hire local individuals at each one of these courses throughout the county, it's a great economic driver, I mean, it's something that gives the people of Swigill County something to do on top of, you know, all the other outdoor activities that we have. I know there's a ton of younger individuals, kids in grade school that are being taught the sport right now, and I think that's really good, keeping them active, getting them all in front of, away from those X-boxes and stuff. And I just think that the economic impact of this was to pass would be so significant, and it would really, you know, will put a lot of time and money into a golf course in my district, and it looks beautiful over there, I know that Mr. Bacon at the country club, they've done a ton of work there, and that looks really great, along with the rest of them here. So I don't know if we want to ask the, ask the chairman to write a letter, you know, opposing this, or if we want to have a resolution opposing this, I don't know what the committee's thoughts are here.
What, what are your thoughts?
Last day of session is the 14th, right? So if you pass it on the 13th, you're going to need to fax it, fax it out to everybody who needs.
But we could do a letter from the chairman that could go out today, wow, or tomorrow, whenever you can sign it.
Well, yeah, no, I heard a motion.
I just, that's probably a good idea, but I just want to know what the impetus is, I find this absolutely ridiculous, like, absolutely ridiculous, but there has to be some rationale behind it, it had to start somewhere, unless it was just to find one industry to eat a little more money out of, I mean, I don't understand it. I mean, does anybody know, it's kind of, this is kind of a problem with having our meeting, you know, getting our packets, and then having a meeting on Monday, there's not a lot of time to do the research, but does anybody know? You said you fought it in several other states, so what is the impetus behind it?
Nationally, nationally, why it came to New York State did not align with the other states in its entirety, from what we were told from some officials in other counties, both Cuban and on Dr. County, with the belief, and I think Matt might have heard something to the same effect, that it was more of a movement in the downstate area for some transparency of fiscal records from golf course owners, in particular.
Gotcha.
One golf course owner.
I gotcha.
And that's where it started. And now the residual effect would just be obnoxious, so who knows, you know, exactly why, but other states, again, it did not seem as if that was the case at all, so there's further, and I do have some information on that, I just don't have it in front of me.
That's fine, that's fine, okay.
I don't know, Betsy, do you know the answer, has any, is there in the law any indication of who would determine the highest best use for the property? Is it up to the assessor?
It looks to be a local decision.
Local assessor is the authority.
Well, if for some reason this passes, I would encourage local assessors to decide that the highest best use for these properties is a golf course.
What is used?
What else could use my post for? Condos?
So funny, Karen.
There we go, just like you're driving down through there and then saying a bunch of condos. Well, looking on the justification on the Assembly Bill, it says that they're really hard to, they don't sell on the open market typically, they're hard to assess, the income is often, or is the general accepted approach to valuing golf courses, where it's often requires reliance on a per-round fees that are paid to neighboring courses, so it's all convoluted, and they're thinking this is the way they're going to make this something.
Assessors have several classes on how to value golf courses, I think they've done a pretty good job.
Well, I'm just reading.
No, I think it's based on information, which is the fact.
For the record, every model of a golf course does have different revenue streams, and it certainly is never apples to apples. Having worked at Matt's facility for 18 years, and now owning a public, you know, daily fee facility versus a private member fee facility, there's a lot of differences. So I could see where there would maybe be some concern for how, you know, that's all accounted for, but in a seasonal recreational market of six months, it's not that many differences, we've come to find out.
So we do, you made a motion.
I did, yeah.
The new vote.
The new vote.
Second, okay, first and second. Any other discussion? All in favor? I oppose.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Shared Services Panel update.
Yes, if you recall, last year, we, the Shared Services Panel project issued a report of potential shared service projects around the county, of all the municipalities and villages and cities and towns, and submitted that to New York State. And at that time, state law required that I hold two panel meetings a year, just to keep things going. What I learned a couple of weeks ago by a visit from an individual from the Department of State, is that little known, I guess, it made it through the state budget this year, that extended this project another three years, so I've got to do this every year for the next three years, through 2021, unless a panel votes to skip a year, or, you know, and just concentrate on what they're already put in. Certain rules that are different, the good news is the timeline is more flexible, we just have to have everything done by the end of the year, instead of these monthly deadlines they had in the last half of the year, gives us a little more flexibility. Bad news is, although the money is there every year for the next three years to be reimbursed, you can only get reimbursed on things that were in the original report. If we add anything this year, it's got to be a whole new report, and you get reimbursed on that. So, for example, in 2021, you only get reimbursed on any new ideas you came up with on 2020, you don't get reimbursed for finishing a project that you came up with in 2018. So attached is the new guidelines, it does require that the county legislature gets to review on a new plan, and we have 45 days to do that. And I did hold the first panel meeting last week out of Bosse's, where I have been holding them, to inform everybody of all these changes in this additional mandate. And to make it interesting, I have, I asked an individual from the Department of State who is an expert in finding funding for communities that need to do water and wastewater projects, and he came and spoke to everybody and told them what the various sources of money were, established himself as the contact for those municipalities, so they can move forward on some of the projects they had in the 2018 plan. We also had Dave Owens from the tourism office give them an update on the county website, and how their municipalities may be able to participate in that website, add in overall savings, and be reimbursed for that as well, and be able to enhance their services. So that went pretty well, the attendance was a bit light, but hopefully in the next meeting I'll get more there.
Richard?
Yes, I do, well, last year, I know you spent a lot of time doing this. Yes, you did. And the question is this, because I know legislators have different outlooks on this, I came from town government, and I believe the consolidation, big time, right down to the dumps. How many projects did we actually get done last year, or didn't we get any done at all?
Oh, there was 19 or 20 projects, or project ideas, in the, in the plan, there are five or six of them that are in progress now. For example, well, the county website is one, where there might be a role for municipalities if they want to, to be part of that. The special operations teams to Swigill, Fulton, and the county, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm kind of.
No, that's fine.
The county record center is being built, there's that open question of whether we'll have any municipal records in there. Some of the, a couple, not every, not every project involved the county, I think Constancy and Cleveland bought a paver together, things like that that have been going on. And of course, the Albany Water District is one.
All right, but we're still working on the meat and potatoes, like regionalized courts, things of that nature.
The other, the other that's being done, that was, fortunately, it was in the plan, is the sheriff's software, because the municipalities use that as well, since we're moving forward on that, we're working on a, on a reimbursement application for some of that software costs through the shared services program.
But that was in the plan already?
It was in the plan, fortunately.
I didn't know we put that in there.
Yep.
That's what my question was going to be for you, because I know they gave us some pretty good news last weekend, I just didn't know how that would.
Basically, because nobody knew that the state would extend this another three years, most counties did, you know, I call a kitchen sink plan, they put everything that gets to come into it. So on the one hand, that helps us on things like that, that we actually did go through, on the other hand, now that additional monies are available in addition years, we've already used up a bunch of the ideas in the 18 plan.
Anybody else have any questions? Rich, you have something to bring up about the new treaty agreement?
We've been working with the tax jurisdictions and the company mediation, and we're in the process of finalizing agreement, so we'll need a special meeting to set up a hearing on that agreement, and when finalized, in the local order, you'd have to adopt to implement that agreement. So, just to let you know.
So it'd be on the 13th?
Whenever the chair decides to have a special meeting, 13th probably be the easiest.
Especially, no, I mean, the committee's special meeting in order to do.
We need a resolution setting public hearings. We have to set two public hearings, so that would be on 13. Legislature would set a public hearings, so the special meeting would be right around that same time, I would imagine.
Right, that would just before.
Terry, chairman, I'm going to screw this up, but I just wanted to welcome and introduce Mara Bosberg, who's our, did I screw it up too bad?
No.
Okay. She's doing an internship with the clerk of the legislature, along with the legislature, she's starting off, helping to update a lot of those advisory committees, working on a bunch of that, and helping with the technological update of the legislature as a whole, so welcome Mara, and I think she's going to do great things for us this summer.
Thank you. Yeah, just to remind everybody, January 25th is the last primary election, that will be from noon to nine.
June.
What did I say? January. After that, they all vote from 6 to 9:00 P.M., and they will be early voting for all of them. And just so you know, Dick, Phoenix is one of our elections, that means they have to have early voting, it includes villages that we run, the other two villages that we have are on the November, so they'll just be on the ballot, but Phoenix is not, they're on their own in March. That is going to be huge impact on them to pay for those nine days of early voting.
Are they, are they, because they're, they haven't got any money.
I know.
I don't see a reason why that can't be pushed through, or they can't, there's no reason for them to have a separate day, I mean, their turnout, turnout's poor at best.
Right. The thing with, with Phoenix is, they've always been their own, so when we redistricted, we didn't put them, put the village into its own district, which we were able to do with the other villages, we put them in their own district, so that when, on November, those people got the ballot with the village on it. So they really can't change until we redistrict again, so we can put them in their own district. I called the village and talked to them, and suggested that maybe they would want to hold their own elections for the next two years, because I'm talking, it's like $3,000 it's going to cost to just demand it for the early voting at our office.
Well, in order to, being from a village board, in order to carry over from this election date to the November, they have to have enough money in the kitty in order to carry that budget over, because their budget goes a month after their election usually, that's how it works out, so.
It's no cost.
It goes deeper than the election, is worth saying.
There's no cost to them if they go on our schedule.
Right.
It would all be absorbed.
Well, budgetarily, they're going to have to internally figure that out, because there is going to be a cost to extend their budget from that point to the beginning of the year.
Right. So it's just informational.
Phil? One thing regarding elections this week, our HR department will be getting memos out to department heads and employees regarding the new mandate that we supply three hours off for all employees to vote, is we are required to notify employees of that, right? So that'll be going out this week. And one of the things that changed from the original proposal, just so that you know, when it was finally adopted, the original proposal included, it was for employees whose, if they didn't have a block of three hours before or after their work shift, they could take the time off, that provision was removed, so it's regardless of whether they have adequate time before or after work, you still have to be able to give them up three hours off to go vote.
Rich?
It's beginning or end of shift, or as mutually agreed, and there's a notice and there's a memo that'll be going out to departments, they'll be paid through their regular wages, but it'll be coded, we're hoping we can code this separately in the unit to track it, because you can't force them to take annual or other leave. And it's not just the county's employer, the statute says, I think it's 3-100, it says employers, so this may have impacts, partly on county government.
Do they have to let their department head know in advance?
Yes, two days in advance.
Otherwise, if the whole department comes in at 2:00 and says, I need three hours.
The other thing is, the reading statute doesn't exempt the board of elections from the statute, so election employees can take time off.
That's why.
The only other, the only restriction on this is you have to be a registered voter to take your.
Now, can they divide it up and do the early voting?
It is. So, yeah.
So the board has to be just election day, each, and go and do it that way.
Just have them vote, have some tea, and forget about them.
Interpret it as elections that the board runs, because it's under the elections law, so a school district election that we're not involved in, that we don't, doesn't fall under the election law. the election law, uh, but it says any election, so we'll have to see how it's interpreted statewide, I would imagine that this will be amended or refined at some point.
I mean, after June.
Next year will be fun, forty days early voting.
Betsy, do you have anything? How's, uh, how's the building coming along?
They're moving along, so they're starting to put steel off, and, you know, the block's already been done, so they're moving.
We are a little bit behind on that stretch, a couple of weeks.
The beautiful sun from New York weather.
Well, anybody have anything else?
Move to a turn.
Second. First and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Richard, thank you.